Educating, informing, serving. Fact TV, keeping government honest. You are watching a Fact TV presentation of the BFUHS School Board Meeting.
You can tell me when and why.
We are, you're good to go.
Good evening, I'd like to call this meeting to the Villasfors High School School District to order, and I'd like to pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and thus is throughout all. We have enough on new board members, it's not on the agenda, but I would like to just have some, um, yeah, I know what I want.
David Clark, I represent Westminster on the Union High School Board.
I am Tanya Neuwirth, and I represent the Athens on the High School Board.
Mike Sack, new member to the High School Board.
Representative.
Rocket.
Priscilla Lambert, I'm representing Rockingham on the High School Board.
Molly Bennet, representing Westminster and your Chair.
Andy Haas, Superintendent of Schools.
Heather Warias, not a board member, I'm here as a staff member.
Darcy Spray, Representative from Grafton on the High School Board.
Jim Vazina, helping hand me in finance.
June Streeter, representing Westminster on the High School Board.
Jason Terry, representing Rockingham on the High School Board.
Thank you, there's no one online yet that's part of our board, so. Adjustments to the agenda, I have a few, I would like to put, I would like to just make a note, under five, we review and approve board minutes, and I just want to make a note that January 9th will be our next meeting to approve those, they were just handed out to us, and we also have the minutes from the reorganization meeting that we will have on next meeting to approve.
I'm sorry, Brenda Park just joined us.
Okay. Hello Brenda.
Hi there.
Okay, so we're just making some adjustments to the agenda.
Alright.
So we're under 600 reports, I'd like to add building and grounds and policy. Under new business, I would like to add a B for resignation. And just so we don't lose track of it, and everybody's listening, I'd just like to put a date there for board retreat of May 22nd. Well, those are my adjustments, does anybody else have any? Jason?
Thank you Molly, I'd like to add executive session to discuss the student matter.
So we're gonna put executive session after director's comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything they would like? I see none, so let's move right on. Communication and public comments, do we have any Andy?
No, we don't.
Nothing on the screen?
Nothing on the screen.
Okay.
I was checking with Dave, just wanted to make sure. Mr. Lambert, nothing, okay.
Review and approve board minutes for March 27th. Priscilla, can I have a motion?
Oh yes, I make a note that we approved minutes from March 27th.
Is there any discussion, does anybody have anything? The only thing I saw, and just because it's a typo, but we got June Streeter, I'd like to change that to Streeter, on five. Anyone else? Alright, we have a motion to approve board minutes of 27th of March with the correction on June Streeter's name, and Brenda, how do you vote?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Priscilla? Darcy?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Perfect, miniature approved, and we are to Jim.
Do you have the floor Jim? Okay, so I'd just like you to turn to page one. And this is what we term as the function page, function summary page. And if you want to get a little bit more detail of what that is, if you go through pages two through fifteen, it'll give you the detail by function. So if you're interested in finding out, for instance, if you look at the school board and you say, wow, that school board is wild, forty thousand eight fifty-eight, what are they doing? You can go back and look at the detail and see what, why the cost is overrun to where it is. So, um, I'll just mention on the, on the expense side, this shows as two hundred and sixty thousand, and, um, I was just, if you would turn to page seven, and I don't have the lines on here, but I'm looking at the state contribution for, this is tuition, which is, I think it's ten lines down, eight lines down. Can everybody find that old page?
One of one thousand five forty-nine.
Uh, twenty-six, one eighty-nine, and two thirty-one, four fifty-eight. So that's what the state pays, they call it on the half, the state is paying that to the tech centers on the half of the school district. Now, I just want to say, usually there's, there's never a wrinkle with this because it's based on, um, the base education amount, and that base education amount, which happens to be nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-five dollars, times the FTE, straightforward math. But where there was a wrinkle this past year, is the, the FTE numbers at each technical center didn't finalize until May. Now, you say, well, big deal, so what? Well, your budget is all put together, you know, January 1st, we're done and over. So it happened to have been a little bit higher, and, and so we're having to pay ten thousand dollars more than we budgeted roughly. So, um, so you, you're gonna end up, expense-wise, again, um, you've got two million one hundred, uh, two million one fifty on page one on the encumbrances, and, and so I hope we're protected, and I hope we have some monies left on the encumbrances. We usually do, usually you don't spend every, every cent that you've got encumbered. So it looks like, at worst, you're gonna be about, you know, two fifty. Um, at best, you may, you may have three hundred on the expense side. Now, as we go to the revenue side, and that is on page, page sixteen, sixteen and seventeen are the revenue. So if you go to page sixteen, um, on line four, local revenues, you'll see a number there of one forty-two, nine forty-two, and that may have been tuition or, or something other, but, but we haven't collected it, so we're gonna be short that. And as we look at other stuff, where we have line seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, I, I think you'll balance out to maybe a hundred short on the revenue side. So if we look at the two fifty on the expense side minus the one hundred, you know, we're pretty close, I mean, a hundred and fifty thousand, hey, it's, it looks like we're okay. At least, we're not in a deficit situation. So, I mean, it's, it's good news in a way. But, but I think, at this time of year, as we get closer, everything is encumbered, meaning the salaries, health benefits, have all been put in and reserved, so we should be okay, we should be looking onto that. So, any questions that you might have?
Jim, if you do have a, a benefit to the budget of a hundred and fifty thousand, can that be sequestered into some kind of reserve for going forward, or what do you, what do you do with that?
The board has two choices, and, um, you can do nothing, of which case, June 30th, July 1st, you're done, it's going back to offset taxes. Before, up to that time, through June 30th, you can say, wow, you know, we've got that pump, that heat pump that never was replaced, we're short fifty thousand dollars, you can do items like that. And so it gives you an opportunity to kind of look at what, what do we really need here, you know, and it's not to expend every dollar, but it's to address needs that are not addressed right now. And I, I just, I, I will say this, as somebody who's been in the business probably too long, it's, it's what you want to do, you want to be proactive, it always, if you wait and say, well, that's not in the budget, we're gonna fix it next year, it always ends up costing you a heck of a lot more. So I, I would just encourage you to think about what you want to do.
Do we have a list of those kind of projects, or? Okay.
Anything else? You?
How some, we're short, are we going to be able to collect the local revenue?
No, I, I will say this, I think, I believe that it was tuition that we, we may have said, you know, and I think there was some confusion about whether, um, school choice students would, would be factored into that, and they're not, school choice, we don't collect tuition on. Uh, the one student that we do have, that we collected tuition, I think was from Two Rivers, and, you know, it's what, what we collect, I mean, it's only that one student that I think we're gonna get.
Molly, do you have a question? So, you're, we're, we, we're talking about a student from Two Rivers that we collect tuition on.
Yeah.
Would that be a so-called state-placed student?
I don't believe that it was. I think it was just, uh, because Two Rivers doesn't have a high school, so they can choose.
Okay, got it.
And I think that's what happened.
And, okay, you're the wrong guy to ask, I would be curious enough, would you have any state-placed, uh, students? I mean, when I say the wrong guy, it's just because I don't know why, you should be tracking it, so, it should be a building function.
We can probably get that answer for you, because I, I don't want to say yea or nay, because I'll tell my head, something's fuzzy in there.
Um, I am aware, from past practice, and we have them, um, if they're from our town, we eat it. And therefore, the state tries to keep state-placed students within the districts of residence.
Yes.
I, I think the only other type of revenue, um, from a school choice that we could recruit is, if a student had an IEP and we were providing services for that student, then we could charge for those services, so.
That's, that's most, what I've seen in the past, is that they're, they're IEP students at state places.
So I don't mean to keep kicking a can down the street, but a hundred and forty-two thousand in loss in local revenue, if, if a town, I don't understand how we can be sure, because the town owes us that, but did we just put it in the budget, not knowing whether we're gonna get paid for it?
I, I, I think, and I'm, I'm not positive, but I think that it was because, um, the, the school choice students, I think that maybe at that time it was misunderstood, because I, I think we have put a few, uh, school choice, and I think there was some thought that we will get some funding on those students, and you don't.
Are you talking about the kids that, you know, like a, a child from Westminster that decided to go to a high school at Compass, is that what you?
No, these are, these are, you know, if you had somebody from Springfield that said,
That came here.
I want to come to this great school, and, um, it, you know, I guess if they're accepted under that school choice parameter.
We don't get money for it.
We do not.
And Springfield still gets to claim them as a student, correct?
Yeah. Well, no, the, so the only other ones would be, there's the, I'm trying to think, it's up in Windsor, the school, they don't have a foundation. No, 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 there's a, school was up to eighth grade, and then there's, um.
Our students that goes somewhere else, also, we do not pay for them, at school choice.
Yeah, no, I'm trying to think of the school, Jamie Dandrow, what I'm, the presentation.
Oh, Weathersfield.
Weathersfield, right, so, so if you picked up a student from Weathersfield, then you would get tuition, and you would get just as, the black, the.
Right, that's right.
The Two Rivers.
Question, and by going a little bit further into that, or the, like Grafton students, because they're part of ours, so if they do a school choice degree math, and we don't pay for their either.
That's correct.
Okay, any other questions?
And we, and we count them here.
Alright Jim, thank you very much, have a safe trip home, unless you want to stay for the party.
He was complaining about the chair, if there was a comfortable chair, maybe he would stay.
Tony, but Andy got me a better chair. Andy Superintendent's report.
Yes.
You want to just wing something?
Well, I'm just gonna give you some highlights of what, what you'll see in, in our big report coming out next week, um, with the, with the Esser, um, projects, um, we are moving forward, um, last week, we went out to do the publication for the construction management, but also to, um, start soliciting bids on different roof projects, um, had a good conversation with Steve Horton about trying, just as we're trying to put things into the right sequence of order, um, he is heavily advising that we do the HVAC system first, then do the roof, then do the driveway, and that kind of order. He would hate to have us do the roof, and then have guys walking all over it, dragging equipment and stuff like that, and then punching holes through, uh, the membrane and whatnot, so, um, so he's, he's kind of putting it in that kind of sequence, uh, which would put the, uh, uh, what we're trying to get, moving on, um, the parking lot and road, only because if we can get someone kind of, uh, to agree to it now, that price, you know, it's getting them in their.
Cute.
Yeah, their cute, thank you, and so, therefore, you know, if we wanted it done right now, someone come in, throw a huge number at us, and if we want to spend it, we'll do it, so. I know Jim has also been working on the bond piece, so, um, that's kind of in order there. But, um, we're also, um, the architect that we had do the feasibility study for the building, uh, she's gonna be in district on Wednesday, I'm gonna speak to her, just finalize, um, I don't know, um, she's kind of indicated that her office is too inundated right now, they wouldn't be able to do the, um, drawings that we need for the science wing renovation, but that's not a, an issue for us, we, um, we've, we've got other architects that we're working with, so we can pivot, um, so, um, Steve does not feel that that's a major, um, lift as far as doing it, because there's two, uh, there's two hardened structures, if you will, that, those are the lab, um, prep areas, um, and just because of the nature of that, those, uh, what they have to be to contain chemicals and whatnot, that's a little more structure involved, um, but, um, you know, putting up, uh, walls and, and talking with the faculty, everyone agrees that the science area is a great place to, to kind of, could use walls, and then also could help people to visualize if it's something to roll out for the rest of the building. We're in the process of getting summer school ready, uh, I've gotten a few emails about driver's ed, um, and so I looked into it, the, our driver's ed teacher, um, had, runs a, a private business during the summer, so he's unavailable to provide driver's ed, so, uh, I'm looking into what can we do, is there a service we can contract with or something, so we can get, you know, just a few students, or if we go out to advertise, if there's another person out there who certified can come in and offer driver's ed for us, so. But, uh, we should have information out, you know, specifically about summer school for this, uh, building also, so, uh, students who need that, uh, can access it. Principal search, uh, we will be having our committee meeting, uh, next week, um, as teachers return, um, and begin to start looking at, um, resumes and, and just collecting, questions, and kind of putting that process together. And then, uh, we've been posting all of our positions, um, and, um, it's actually nice to see that we're not just getting one or, or nobody applying, I think that the, you know, just thinking in education where it's been the last three plus years, um, it's really been a challenge, um, with, with people leaving the profession, where we're starting to, it appears that, you know, we're not getting the fifty applicants we used to get, which was always nice, um, but we are getting, you know, um, a small handful, what I would say are, are attractive candidates, so it's, you know, it's good to have choices, I guess, but we will have more out in our report next week. Happy to answer any questions.
Andy, do we have anything with the maintenance position, or are we still advertising that?
That's one I need to check with Mr. Broadley on, um, because I'm not sure where he was leading that, and then, um, I haven't heard anything in it, since last week, so I'll have to check in on that.
Do you know when the principal's search meeting will be?
Nicole left, and she was putting that together, so I apologize, I don't have a date, um, but I will get it for you.
Okay, so, go ahead.
Well, any questions Andy? I'm curious who your search committee is, and I'm curious what criteria they are applying for the search.
So we, uh, put out to the community, if anyone was interested in participating, and could give us, um, just a little reason why they'd like to be on it, um, so we, uh, we have, um, a few school staff, uh, teachers on it, uh, school counselor, um, there is a community member, uh, who has requested to be on it, um, and there's a parent, um, and then we, as, as we're coming back, we're gonna be looking to pull a student in, because I think it's important to have student voice, um, on a high school principal search committee.
Do you, do you have any board members?
Yes, I'm sorry, thank you, uh, Molly and Priscilla.
Wonderful, and what criteria are you applying for the search, what you're looking for, besides principal?
Um, the last thing I want is just a warm body, um, so, uh, we're trying to.
Sorry, Westminster's really busy tonight.
Thought it was like a.
Surprised or none?
Diabetes thing going on, but, uh, you know, I, I mean, I, I would, I would love to see is, you know, what kind of diversity we can pull in, um, as, as far as candidate searches, I mean, I think that, um, you know, we, we've talked about it, uh, quite a bit at this board meeting, um, or this board, talked about, um, a need for diversity, uh, but we're looking for someone who also has, um, got some forward-thinking innovation of how we can, um, look at education differently, um, as we continue to work on proficiencies, and, and to get towards more, uh, project-based learning, how do we develop that, how do we bring our staff up to speed, so we're looking for someone who's gonna come with that kind of a background, as opposed to a, a much more traditional approach.
All my questions?
Yes, Jim?
When the, um, principal's search committee gets underway and everything, is there any way that the board can see, the rest of the board can see the applications, the resumes?
Yeah.
Or just the, because usually we just see the ones that you finalize, um, and I think that maybe you should have two students on, because we have three hundred something kids.
We can ask, I, I think.
Male and a female?
Yeah, no, that's, it's a good point, the, the difficulty we ran into with the middle school principal, quite honestly, was the folks who are on the search committee need to be committed, you know, from the beginning to the end, and if they, if they can't make, you know, um, an interview, they can't jump back in, just not fair to candidates and, and whatnot, um, students, they, they have busy lives, and so that's the, that's the challenge, so, um, but, um, you know, I think it might be good, so.
Andy?
Jason, you were next.
Yeah, I was answering hers, though, can I go as far as the middle school, the students?
Sure.
Um, the students, what we did at the middle school was the students actually had it after when, when they had, um, like student council, or a bunch of them, where they sat down and interviewed each one of the candidates, the final ones, and then they met with the committee to give us their reactions and their stuff, so they would fold in that way. Sorry, thank you.
Jason?
Uh, Andy, where's, uh, can you let everyone know where John is, like the public, in case they're wondering where John is? Oh yeah, he is on, um, he's visiting, um, family out of state. And are you gonna give the principal's report, or is that, uh, just, are we going by the email that he gave us, or? Um, I can, I can definitely try and fill in gaps if you have questions about it. So here's my question, at the last meeting, in the meeting before that, I know I talked about reviews, and we wanted to know status of reviews, I stated what the policy was, so we can have a, a good, uh, background when we approve the roster tonight, and, um, you know, I, I don't see that on the agenda, it was, you know, it was in my director comments last meeting, and the meeting before that, and I just, I want to make sure that we do it right, all policy procedure, and, and it would be nice if we know what the status is on reviews. Mr. Broadley did provide me with that information. Okay, so. That's something for open session, or does that have to be an executive session?
I, I, I mean, uh, as, as far as his staff, and what he indicated to me is that all of the staff have been observed, um, and, um, he is, you know, recommending that staff return, um, unless they're retiring.
So all of the staff is in good standing, and he recommends everyone who to return?
Yes.
Okay. Fair enough, thank you.
Priscilla?
I'm sorry, uh, just to clarify, uh, just a couple things that you said, um, you said HVAC first, then roof, then driveway?
Correct.
Okay, I, I thought I heard you right, um, as far as drivers said in the summer, I know there have been some summers in the past where it was not offered in the summer, and it was just offered within the school year, um, and then if students did want to do it in the summer, they kind of got their own, is that a possibility as well?
Well, I, I think that's always the possibility, my understanding is there's a, a list of maybe up. Well, I I think that's always the possibility. My understanding is there's a a list of maybe upwards of close to fifty students who. And, you know, even if you had it during the summer with with a with our teacher. You wouldn't even get that many through. So but you think fifty in the backlog that comes into the next into the school year, if we could. Get some of those kids through, it would be. It would be, I think advantageous to our students if we could find a way. So I don't know if we can get someone, but you know. I think we should try and make a look though.
I was just looking for possible alternatives to.
I brought it up to Mr. Broadley last year, and I was told that he'd looked and that he would guarantee that that would not be the case. Again, and this year we would have one because at this pace, you know, as. Obviously, as kids turn fifteen, they can't sign up for driver's ed until they have their permit in hand. And kids are turning fifteen every day. And. The guidance department is telling them that some of them won't get their. If they wait for the school driver's ed program, they won't get their license until the end of their junior year at the rate that the. The list is. Compiling. We've always had one, I mean, until this last guy was hired. So. I think it should be a priority. Because last year personally, I looked into it. It was going to cost about a thousand dollars and all of the summer programs were booked. It was all. Was the closest. Time that I could get in.
I mean, is it advantage our state offers to students because our surrounding states do not offer. Public. Education, driver's ed, and so that is a cost that is a burden to families. So, you know, again. I just found out about it. So that's I'm just wanted to let everyone know we are looking into it, but I have received a couple of emails.
Nancy.
Andy, I just wanted to follow up the last meeting about the athletic trainer. John was going to let families know. I haven't heard yet, but I just wonder if we could just reach out. To let families.
We will get something out this week.
Okay, I mean, I'm sure a lot of them know, but maybe something official.
Yep.
And is there going to be an ad placed for an athletic trainer?
Believe it is.
It's out. Okay, great. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? So I just, I'd like to thank Andy. He is really taking on. Most of the administration parts of the high school right now, plus doing what he's supposed to be doing. I know from experience that trying to do two or three jobs at once never makes the day well. But. Two of us live off energy drinks and probably our husband and wife would kill us if they knew how many, but. The real truth is that I appreciate everything you're doing, and I know that you are. You know, putting yourself. Right in. The middle of the mud pile because you have to because. It's where we are and and I appreciate all the extra effort and. You know, that's why, you know, we're trying to. You know. Hold back some of the emails to you and and do the best we can to. You know. Squash and fires out because. You know, you're going to spread yourself so thin that. Even the energy drinks aren't going to take it. So don't, you know. Those of us who know and have walked in footsteps like yours understand and it's nothing we can do forever. But I appreciate that you're really taking on the school and. And doing everything you can to make sure that every day is as good as it can be and the teachers have the support and the kids have the support. And it it means a lot to a lot of people and probably I will tell you. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I I couldn't do it without. Without the staff at the central office supporting because they're they're in here as well. I think they're like. They're probably seen more by by our teachers and working directly with our teachers, but are probably, you know, they're not out here visibly, but they're helping out.
Jim?
So I had a question. Was the tennis. Court.
We're going to talk about the tennis court later.
Oh, okay. I thought we were on principal's court. So, okay. And. What is maker space? Could you? Might not.
What is that on? Is that part of the principal's?
Yeah.
Oh, we haven't got there yet. Well, we can talk about, you want to talk?
I, yeah, yeah. Let me just pull it up so I can speak to it. How's that? Give me one second just to pull it up.
And I'm sure this is a John question, but Earth Day, I was wondering how that would work. As far as this building goes, or if it was just a presentation for the younger kids.
Yep, so. So the Earth Fest Day is something, as as he pointed out, that Patty Murray kind of put together with the science department. And essentially, it's going to kind of run like a winter carnival day. So if you're familiar with winter carnival, but and and students, high school students can help. Facilitate different events where then students. What we're trying to do is bring students up from the elementary schools and have the high school students kind of teaching. The the younger students about different pieces. I don't know all the events. Was that that presentation? And I can't remember all of them, but there there's quite a few activities that they're doing around. The school, but students can, you know, they'll 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 rotate around through type of thing. So. You know, it it's it is disruptive, but in the sense of the traditional day, but it's that. Opportunity, I think, for students to kind of learn differently. So.
Do you want me to join in then?
Sure.
I think the cool part about the thing that I think is the coolest about that day is that the students asked Patty, and it was her earth beat students, which is the environmental club. And they asked about doing that. And then she kind of went with it. So I love that it was student led. And they've been communicating with the fourth grade at Central School, I think, is who's coming up. And then there's only a handful of students in that group, so she connected with Justin Obie and he facilitates. The student council. So it's kind of those two leadership groups in the school doing it. And then. Various teachers volunteered to like, yep, I'll do a. You know, we'll go out on the trails and there's, you know, there's all sorts of different things that are outside that. That staff is leading with some student leaders as well. So it was student driven, which I love. And then the back, the gardens will be. Kind of resurrected and all of that. So.
And then a maker space is kind of it. It's the buzzword these days, but it's basically the idea that. Where students can go with a with a with a problem or a. You know, when I say a problem, that. A teacher can present. A situation to students and then they can be creative in finding ways to apply their learning to solve that problem. So. And work together collaboratively in in small groups, but then in bigger groups. So it might be something like. You want to design, you know, a glider that's going to glide a certain number of distances. And so then. The maker space has all the equipment available for them. So three D printers, laser print, you know, laser etchers, things of that nature, but also just down to. You know, wood and other materials that students can bring together. And so Meredith Wade, our steam coordinator, had applied for this grant. And I was, you know, pleasantly shocked that she got it. And and so. Essentially, this group is working with teachers here and with Meredith to kind of develop how to. What's that going to look like and how do we implement it into it? And it. You know, they're looking at kind of maybe starting small with having some. Ability that a teacher can check components out and bring them in, but also. As we get the tech engineering room back up, you know, and move away from just traditional wood shop and move into. Much more things that really becomes your maker space that way. And then. You know, teachers can access a lot of that stuff too.
Can you tell us what steam coordinator means?
Yeah, thank you. So it's science, technology, engineering, art and.
Math.
Thank you. And so it's also known as STEM. A lot of time art gets can can get dragged in there. Westminster. Has Studio Y and Studio Y, if you're familiar with Studio Y, which is out at the West West School, that's a maker space. And so students from Westminster get. Bussed up there on a regular rotation. And again, that's much more of the even with the arts, they do a whole. Thematic piece around building it, and it's a way that students are learning differently than a classroom. Did that answer you?
Yeah, I just, I'm. I'm just a little concerned about all the academic time that we've lost because of, you know, unforeseen circumstances. And there's certain curriculum that. Each class has to get through, and I'm afraid they're with. You know, a loss of a day here, a loss of a day there that they're going to start, oh, I got to get through this curriculum because we got to get the credit and. And I'm afraid they're going to start driving it down the kids' throats and they're not going to understand it. That's my only. Concern. But.
That's a good concern. Is Earth Day for everybody or just that science group?
It is for everybody. And and different teachers are looking at how they can incorporate Earth Day into their curriculum as well. So it's not just a. Take it out of context kind of piece. So. So English, you know, definitely there's, you know, it's looking at. Materials that can be read or or how a student might be able to write an essay around it, social studies. There's a lot of history around Earth Day. So it can get incorporated into the different curriculum.
Are we good with the principal's report? Thank you, Andy.
Sure.
We're going to move on to staff report. Heather.
So I asked Heather Warias, who's our work-based learning coordinator, just to come and give you all. Just. You know, an understanding of what she's been working on this year. And I mean, just it's amazing the number of students that she has involved, but. Just you might hear work-based learning out there and you what the heck is that? So.
Sure, thanks. Keep the facts those down for me, please.
Do that.
And I was, thank you.
Are these all one?
They're either separated by, yes, they're all.
Got it. Okay, there's four things.
Well, that would it just? Yeah.
I got that.
Yeah.
You can have your jobs.
Thank you. Yeah, look, all good.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, I think we're short, so that, yes. If you have to share that.
I have one here. All right. Well, thank you all for letting me take a few minutes of your time. I really prepared to talk about our Fearless Future Summit that we're going to have in June to let you. Know what that is. That will be coming up. We'll be advertising for it and all of that. The other two pieces that were just the the non-color photocopies. You may have seen those before. There's something that I. Was sharing with John.
I'm having trouble hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a little louder.
The way, sorry, the non-color photo paper photocopies you may have seen before. The one with the big BF on it. That's what we send. It's on the website. That's what I send to all of the parents. And guardians, and it's just kind of a quick. What is work-based learning and a reminder that any student in our building can meet with me. So it's really helping our students. Like, my quest is to help all of our students believe that they can live. And thrive in our community if they choose to. I think a lot of time our students only know what they are exposed to, what they see. So if they're not exposed to all different types of careers, opportunities right here, and then. Have intentional connections where they can ask questions like, what would I need to do to be able to do that job? You know, it's overwhelming. So the role, this position is helping all of our students have a plan as graduates. And something that's meaningful for them. So. My goal, I think our goal, is that when our students leave here, they have a pretty solid plan. And their plan is not just like a pie in the sky, like. I really love doing this, you know, whatever it may be. It's feasible. They they have seen it. We do informational interviews where students can call. Or zoom with someone in a career that they're interested in. And the student interviews, they can ask questions and I help them formulate those questions. I sit with them for that interview. Sometimes they're lucky enough to do that in person. The next step, and of course, they're working with me through this and they're guidance counselors. Most of my referrals come from guidance where they're guiding them and they're asking these questions first. About their interests. If they really feel passionate about, I'd really like to check this out. Students go out for an afternoon or a morning or a full day on job shadows. My updated numbers so far this year, we've had thirty seven students do that. Go out for the day on a job shadow. So they'll say. I really want to be a veterinarian, but I want to work with large animals. That was the latest one I had. So. Vermont Wagyu was kind enough to connect me with their vet and the student, you know, connected with him and traveled around to all the. Different farms and she came back and was like. We extracted fluid from a knee, one of the calves, you know, all this stuff, like so excited about it. But then now they have a relationship. And that student's only a sophomore. So. What does it entail versus a vet tech? So her next step will be going to a veterinarian's office. To see what that would be like instead of just large animals. So kind of feeling this all out before they make a commitment to vet school, which is. Years and years and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. So that's the premise. We have students working all over the community. And beyond doing welding, fire services, mechanics, diesel mechanics, you know, typical car mechanics. Gosh, I'm drawing a blank on all the rest of them, but we have about fifteen students out there now. Throughout the semester, twenty students have left and worked. Like gone every day for part of their day on an internship. For credits. Not all of them are year long. It depends on what their schedule looks like. So those are kind of some of the numbers so far. I know that's a lot of information I gave you. I don't want to read anything to you. But just an understanding of working with our students. I'm currently working with our eighth graders every week and I I go on Fridays, so I call it future Fridays. My goal there is to have our younger students starting to think about, it's twofold, actually. One, starting to think about themselves and their life beyond school. And that's so. Far out there for them to even think, like for them to grasp. Where do you see yourself in five years? It's not a question I can accurately answer. So helping them with that process. But two, helping them understand their why, like connecting the importance of school. To themselves and having them have a little more buy-in to their school day. So kind of reframing things, right? Like. The importance of nonverbal communication and how that would help them, you know, I'm talking to younger students, like with a lawn mowing job in their community. Their neighbor, you know, they are portraying themselves in a positive light, that they may be more apt to get that little, you know, cash paying gig on the weekend. Type of thing, all the way up to. Whole work is not only to help you with some retention of what you're learning, but it's also to help you build that skill. A follow-through, how do you learn best learning if you make your own notes or if you just reread it and you talk it over with someone else in your household so that. In the future, when you're working, you will already have those skills ingrained. Like, it's about being committed to yourself, having, you know. The internal drive to be successful, all of that. And what does success look like for you? What are you interested in? So making school a little more meaningful like to them personally, if that makes sense. So that's been exciting going down with our. With our eighth graders. That's been pretty cool. But up here, I'm super busy with our high school students. And it's been great. So I'm happy to answer. Any questions you may have about that. There's a lot of information in what I just gave you. The double-sided sheet is really data from first semester. I haven't calculated hours and all of that yet. But our students who are out on internships, working every day, can be one block, two blocks, depends on their schedule. Every one hundred twenty hours that they're successfully working and they check in with me, they have like written or verbal. Cues and they're working on transferable skills. So it's really things that make them hirable. And have a time sheet signed in by their employer. I check in with that. Some are paid, some are unpaid internships. Um and have a time sheet signed in by their employer. I check in with that. Some are paid, some are unpaid internships. Those successful completion every hundred twenty hours is one credit. So that's how they're earning their credit and the. By far and wide, the majority is elective credits. It's a different um piece if it's for. An academic credit like a science or a math and that's possible for sure. That just involves much more of a big community effort um with the teachers and all of that. Other questions on that part before I talk about our exciting day in June?
You said you have twenty students that go out every day.
I have had twenty. I think I'm at sixteen now, fifteen or sixteen. Some of them were only for one semester. I know they, some of them are like just block four, or blocks one and two, so it's all different. They sign out at the desk with Serena and they're going to work for part of the day. So it's like. I really think I wanna do this and they did a job shadow and loved it and then they made that connection with all those things we talked about earlier about preparing for that. For that day of following them and they presented themselves in a lake that I will say we live in an area. Where our community by and large says yes when I ask. So that's been immensely helpful. So students where I think, I don't know, could I send a kid out on this internship? And then it's like. A couple of weeks later, we found a fit for them and it works. So we've been really fortunate in that.
I I'm super, super glad to see this back um when my daughter. Attended here. Um one of them worked at the local vet clinic. Awesome. And is now a vet. It's it's fantastic.
Thank you. And also I always tell the students. A successful job shadow, for example, doesn't mean you love it and you wanna fall in love with it and do it. It might mean. That is not at all what I thought in my mind would happen with that. You know, and I've had a couple of those where I've sent students out for for an afternoon or for the whole day. And then when I follow up with them the next day, they're like, I didn't notice. I didn't really think about that. Like. We didn't really talk to anyone else other than who was in the office. They don't leave. They're on a computer all day. You know, like just different, different ideas of what they had. Versus the reality of what that job entails. So. Um we've had some pretty great experiences. We've had some really interesting days, as Darcy knows, with. Students out there really seeing what real life is for these jobs and then they can pursue it or not.
Okay, I have a question. Think you got a couple placements down or what I used to think of as L and B truck service. What is it now? ATG, thank you, okay.
I have one student there, yes.
So you have young people put under ATG and they receive hands-on learning. What then becomes available to them for um adri- additional career training? I know we don't have it up at RV PC and I'm not sure that they do Diesel in Brattleboro. Wh- wh- what do they do?
I don't believe they do Diesel in Brattleboro. Um. So it would vary from student to student. For that particular student, he. The student who's actually there went on three different job shadows. At ATG was his first. And he fell in love, loved it. They loved him. It became ongoing for him. But he had come to me with three areas of interest and I really felt it was important that he went out and did the other two. And he did. Let decided that was really what his passion is. The folks at ATG are the ones who then he's learning outside of the school. They have, in a sense, become his guides, teachers, if you will, if we use that term as guides.
I only, and I only pick on ATG because I read his story.
Yeah.
I presume you have other situations, you know, where you get your.
Yeah.
Feet wet, so to speak, and then if the career interests you, you need to.
Breaks.
Find the um path training for that career. So that's. Kind of, I'm interested in how that works for kids and I'm not looking for. Specific, specific, but you know, once they've done their job shadows, what's the follow-up?
Yeah. So that's, it's ongoing and it's case by case with the students. So if they love it and then they, I kind of identify this is my focus. Then our goal is to help prepare them as best we can for that. So I brought. Six or seven students up to Northeast Driver School because their interests all involve a commercial CDL. License and explaining what that means, interstate, interstate. I'm also learning a lot. I've only been doing this for like, and I was like, what? I feel like every day there's something new. I used to say every day like, that's my one new thing to learn today. And now I'm like, that is number twenty-eight to learn today. But it's our goal to he- help them receive the connections for those trainings. It involves a lot of our students, although not all. It's a lot of different opportunities through our VISA counselor who's here every Wednesday and is amazing. It may be through um. Uh trying to think on all the acronyms get lost to me, but Department of Labor and like ADB has GOL. Through them, through them, like connections with the jobs program or higher ability if a student is receiving. You know, I specialized services or not. So it all, then we take the first, the student individually. What are their areas of need to get that training? So it's not just as easy as you should go to the Health Sciences Program. As you can choose Springfield or Brattleboro, although sometimes it is. Sometimes it's like I spoke to a nurse or a doctor. That's great. If, let's go back and talk to guidance and see if that can fit in your schedule. That's awesome when it does. If it doesn't work out that well, we don't just say like, well, I'm glad you like that. We work with them to find them. The, you know, the programs that work for them. So that's still, it's ongoing, it's personal and I'm still learning.
Just one very brief follow-up question, please, Molly. Are you adequately staffed for your class?
Some weeks I absolutely am, other weeks like currently where they all just have their junior meetings. So it's like their plan for the future. They really just sat with their guidance and every day, um Mr. Devo especially, especially was like. Twelve, you know, every night it would be twelve referrals. Um so we'll get there with them. For the most part, I feel like I am, but there are times where. Scheduling the students and then they don't, they're absent that day or they're having a test that day. Sometimes I spend a lot of time. The honest answer, sometimes I spend a lot of time because I pull them from class to meet with me. I'm not, I don't have them like. You know, they're all doing their own schedule. And if the teachers are generally very generous with their time. But sometimes it's like, oh, we have a test that they are missing review and I would not want to do that to a student. So they're going back in their schedule cuz I've looked at the schedule for, sent the email, forgotten their schedule, received the email response the next day. Have to go back and power school to their schedule. I waste a lot of time doing that some days. Um. And it's just time-consuming, but then there are other weeks where things seem to be going pretty smoothly. So I haven't thought beyond that to answer your question very well. If you looked at my desk, you would say no, but I I feel like. We're serving our students well. I I don't feel like anyone's not getting what they need. Yes.
If, if I could have made a comment, um. My introduction to Bell's Falls High School was working with Heather and Mark Devo. Mark Devo was trying to do this in his spare time, which he has now. Um and Andy did a great job identifying Heather and where Heather has taken this. Program to in a short period of time is amazing. So your question, I think there's a lot of potential here and there's. There's a lot of need here and it's just gonna be one of those things that's gonna continue to mushroom. So um. I'm very encouraged and, you know, we struggle sometimes with things that are getting missed at the high school and not going well, et cetera. This is a major win. This effort, major win. I see it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Just a couple of that, we're looking at the potential of how we can better use the intervention block or carrier time here. Uh like currently it's at the end of the day and and there there seems to be some students who have dentist appointments. Multiple times a week, multiple weeks in a row. Um and so how can we um. How can we leverage that, which would then. Offer an opportunity for student, for Heather to meet with groups of students as opposed to extracting them from class. Which I think would. Say the chasing around a a lot. So that 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 is one way we're we're looking at it. So. But it it's, it is, and I think where you're gonna go with this. Uh event you have coming up. I mean, it's the amount of effort she's put into it. You know, I I think it's growing very quickly and that's a good thing. I mean, it's not a bad thing. Watch it grow.
It's pretty amazing. Like I'll have a student come in and say, you know, I was telling my teacher that. I ki- I saw this and I kinda like to do that. And she said, you should talk to Mrs. Warias. And I'm like, oh my gosh, that teacher threw me a doozy. And like within a week, I have a student, you know, who's out there talking to someone who's in that career. So it's really cool and amazing and I, you know. I appreciate the support from from guidance, from our partners at the Brattleboro Development Corporation and BF Trades, which um. Mike's involved with and our staff, like as I said. Teachers are always really generous with their time for me to meet with a student. Um um my office is near guidance. That's really helpful. And I stand out there every break period and I spend about twelve of those fifteen minutes every day saying. Did you get your signed referral packet? Did you get your signed referral packet? Because they come to me because they're developmentally where they are at fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. And I give them the information. I need your parent or guardian to sign that to bring it back and we'll get started. And I I chase them. Uh so it's like my day is fun because I'm with the students a lot, but I'm also learning all of these new parts of. Our community that even I didn't know existed. So it's been great. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
I just wanna, you know, thank Heather for taking this program to a whole nother level. Um. It's been life-changing for my son who was a senior. Um and my daughters had one day that she did a job shadow, which was fantastic and outstanding adventures. Um so anyway, if anyone has questions to ask a parent, I'm supportive of this and would love to talk about it. It's just. It's amazing.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Darcy is a parent kind of on both ends. She has one child who. Is earning a ton of credits and is like identified a path and has all the support. Like you were saying, we don't offer what he's interested in here. But he is getting much more support, real life support, connections. Also, there is something to be said for our students, watching how professionals interact with one another. That they're not gonna get in a classroom. So they're seeing that, um how he carries himself differently, you know, all of that. And then she has a younger student, younger child, my student, who's just exploring. And trying different things out. And that was one of the doozies. I was like, what in the world? And then it worked out. And so. Yeah, so she would be a good one if you have questions.
Yeah. And and the staff in the school has been so supportive of Heather and all of these students on this path. It's like, absolutely, do this, you know. It's exciting. Something great for our school.
Agreed. Thank you. Yeah, just like the community, the staff, I've never received a no. They may say. Next Tuesday doesn't work well for us because they have a test or they're reviewing or whatever. They have a presentation for them to miss. But how about next Thursday? Like they'll give me another date. So it's been great.
Yeah, I do have something. It's very, I have um a couple of students that have come in job shadow of me, not from here, but from Townsend. And just the um, the other side of it, we're very short staff in my area. So we're trying to get these students to come. Um so it it works both ways.
Absolutely. That's a great segue to the next.
So you know, nobody's asking to, to job shadow superintendent.
Okay, so.
Heather, Heather's gonna look for one.
So this, the color handout, this is our flyer. So this is more informational for you before we release this everywhere. We're really excited to help, you know. Like I had mentioned before, have our students realize that right here in our community, if they choose to be here, they can live and thrive. It's not like, what can I find for work here? You can do whatever you want to do here. So we have invited, and when I say we, I mean, our school. Um Christie Bettet from Brattleboro Development Credit Corporation, which is not a bank. They're actually, sounds like a bank. I always was like. It's not. Their job is to help our, exactly what I'm doing, but they have a lot of funding to help. Um make these connections. So she's, she's a great supporter of this program and BF Trades. We're all kind of co-hosting this event and we're going to call it a career fair, which we had here that was. Um put together rapidly last spring. It was exciting and impressive. Um I was happy to be a small part of it last spring. But we're amping it up this year, so we're calling it our Fearless Futures Summit. And instead of just like careers, those looking for jobs, career exploration, we're having all sorts of any postgraduate. Program or idea or topic you may have. So um again, I won't read to you. You can flip through here, but. We're going to encourage all of our students to dream for themselves because again, sometimes that's hard for our. Teenagers to do, to think that they can. A lot of times like I can't do that. I, you know, no one. In their world has ever done that. So that's a hard thing for our students to really believe in themselves that they can. So and that to show them that the possibilities are limitless here. So our plan, we've invited, we should have over seventy. Partnerships and businesses coming that day. To present, a lot of them are gonna be hands-on, some will be a table with, you know, um information. So it's a typical career fair too. So we'll connect after. Um but uh prior to that, on Tuesday, May twenty-third. Christie and I will be presenting to our staff. About preparing the students in their advisory groups, which are smaller, how to best come prepared for this. So we're gonna have a student passport that students will have, will hand them when they walk in that day. So they're gonna work with their advisory teacher on a di- identifying their top three interests. And we're gonna give them all sorts of tools to do that, the teachers. And their passport will be like, it'll get stamped as they go through. So I've checked all these out. So in other words, don't run to like where the food is. Right? So that'd be great. On your way out, go to that booth and maybe that will be a job that's of interest to you. But really what you've identified through, I loved this in this class. I, this is a strength of mine. This is what I have an interest in. So where will they be? The teachers will have a list of everyone who will be there. So on the twenty-third of the staff meeting, we're going to train the staff on how to work with our students cuz I can't do three hundred kids all at once. Then on the next Tuesday, the thirtieth during advisory, that's when the teachers will prepare the students for this event. The event will be the next week on June sixth. It will be in the gymnasium in the back parking lot. From nine to noon. So our plan is from nine to two, nine to ten, our eleventh and twelfth graders will go. I felt it was important to have them go first, um good ones really looking for a job, you know, before like. If anyone were to run out of handouts or applications or anything, I want them there first. And if their time runs over a little bit because it's meaningful, that's okay. From ten to eleven, our ninth and tenth graders will go. And then from twelve to ten, our eighth graders are going to come up and attend and I'm down there working with small groups of them. Also, our morning tech students will go during that last block so that we don't want them to miss it. At some point in there, we may have one bus from Brattleboro, Brattleboro students who are um. Identified as staying in this area and who could benefit from a traditional career fair. At noon and then that'll be, it'll be three hours. So it's gonna be fast and furious. It'd be great if you could come, if you wanted to check it out at any time. And at noon, we're going to do a thank you luncheon for all of the area. Um participants and Harley is going to be putting that on. So that's paid for with um BDCC money as well. Throughout, as well as them going through their. Um you know, what their interests are, we're gonna have mock interviews, a station where they'll work on it, like practice interviews. Working on an elevator pitch if they wanted to. This is something students could could participate in or not. Our IT um person is doing headshots and a LinkedIn account right there, helping the students create it if they would like. Business card creation, if there are students who are maybe thinking they're young entrepreneurs and they're thinking of their own, you know. Landscaping business or whatever after school or whatever it may be, we can help them with business card creation. And then also one section that'll be like business wardrobe on a budget and have examples for our students of. How to dress appropriately for the job they want. So it should be pretty cool, pretty exciting. I'm exhausted already and it's April, we're not June yet. Um and then the those passports that I told you about, we're gonna, we're still working on the details of this. Cuz I would like the students to hand them in when they leave, so I have them because they tend to lose paperwork. But they will then go back to their advisories, I think on the eighth, that same week. They'll be denoted for that discussion and then referrals will come to me for those who are like, I really connected. With this business. I definitely like to learn more or whatever. And then I'll have a whole new batch of referrals for fall directly from this. That makes sense. That was a lot. Thank you. It's all in here. I mean, I give you everything. That was a lot. Thank you. It's all in here. I mean, I give you everything. And if you have questions, you can email me, of course, or call the office, whatever. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions or can we let Heather go? I'm looking good.
Great. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, so let's uh, I'm gonna move on. Um, six B is one of our adjusted agenda, agenda items, building grounds. I really just wanted to get a date for another meeting. And then Priscilla, the next one is gonna be policies. If there's an update on policies, where we are, what we need to be doing, what's the next meeting?
Yeah, um, we need to approve E one, which is the title, um, thing that.
So E one needs to go on the next agenda?
Right. And C fifteen has also been posted, which is student conduct.
Okay, so we got more.
Um, and we're looking at possibly a meeting next Tuesday.
Okay, um, yeah, the sooner the later you gotta let me know, cause.
Yeah, I, I've mentioned to Heather today and she was gonna see that possibility for that.
Uh, as far as building in grounds, um, if we wanted to hold it like before an SU meeting on next Wednesday, we could fit it in there or we'd be into the following week, which.
So five thirty, next Wednesday?
If, if that works for everybody, we can do that.
What's the date on that, Andy?
The nineteenth.
So, building a grounds on the nineteenth, what I'm really looking for is not to reinvent the wheel and not to hash out stuff we've already hashed out, but for people to come with items that they wanna see us put on our priority list. Um, Andy and I have got a lot of items already written down of things that we know need to happen. I'm sure that we're gonna miss something. So if, you know, when you come to building grounds, if you, you know, could spend five minutes of your lunch break, just with a quick list of, you know, okay, like the tennis court got, got passed me. Um, there's a lot of other things that we've been working on and, you know, so if we had, I just wanna build that list. It's all I want for this kind of meetings to just all of us to just help build that list and then we'll prioritize them with Steve and, and it'll help kind of get away from some of this, why didn't we do this talk?
I, I think would, would also be helpful, like just add in there, um, because we are looking for each building to develop kind of a a long-term strategic plan for facilities on, on top of other pieces, is what goals are people looking to do? Is it to, you know, improve our academic setting, improve our athletic setting? Is it to?
Well, I think in building the grounds, I'm just.
I, I, I threw those out on purpose, like, you know.
What the heck are you doing to me here?
But, but, but like, so as we put that together to help prioritize all of these things, what is, what are, what are the big goals we want for this building as far as building in grounds, um, type of thing? So, um, you know, is it to build a, a bus port? That might be a goal, but it might be long-term in the future type of thing.
So that's.
It's, it's very similar, yeah.
I think we're both on the same page is just, you know, just kind of come prepared with some items so that we can, so we can kind of bring us all together and not have these oopsies that we've been having. We wanna be full speed ahead here.
There was a list at one point. Do you think you could, no, but, but do you think you could get?
Yeah.
To us, so that we can.
You come with your items. Policy committee, we don't really have anything, but um, Priscilla says we get E one and C fifteen that have been posted. So if everyone could try to look at those and we'll have them on the next meeting's agenda to get them approved. And please, if you're gonna have a policy meeting, get it scheduled for me, cause my time is very slim. Um, and that's one of the, one of the, one of the committees that I'm on. So, thank you. Unfinished business, approval of teacher roster. But I get a motion to approve the teacher's roster and then we can have discussion?
I think a motion to approve the teacher's roster with the exception of the math physician and one of the social studies physician. So we can discuss.
So there is a motion made to approve the teacher roster with the exception of what?
The open math physician and possibly the one social studies physician. That's.
I don't know how to make a motion with possibly.
Well, and.
I'm sorry.
The exception of the, the social studies. The reason for that, this is, let me speak to that. Is that we have nineteen classes that have less than ten students in them. And three of the social studies classes are below our minimums. So if we cut one teacher there, um, we would still have students going, plenty of students going in it. And we have four, four math ones going now.
To make a motion, I know, but the motion didn't make sense to possibly.
No, and, and, and one, with the exception of one, social studies physician.
So, before you talk to this, I want to understand the motion.
I made a motion.
No, let me repeat it, cause I want everybody to understand what I just heard. We have a motion on form to accept the teacher's roster as written, except we are going to take a math, the open math teacher off. And we are going to take a social studies physician out.
Yes.
Did you get that? Okay, now, you may speak to it. Thank you.
Sorry. All right. The reason behind that is that right now we have four math um, teachers. So adding a fifth one would add a position. And right now, we have nineteen classes that have less than ten students in them. Three of those classes are social studies classes, which places them below the minimum that's in our policy. Therefore, taking out one, that one position, we still can offer enough classes that we have them available for students. I did the math on that. Which, what I did was I took out thirty for this tech center for two periods. We actually have seventy-one going to the tech centers. So that is even less students available to be in our classes. And I said, took and multiplied three hundred and twelve students for two classes and two hundred for the other two classes, taking out those thirty. Then, the teachers each teach three classes per day, which at the current level would be fourteen point fifty-two per class period. If you reduce one teacher, you get down to fifteen point oh six students per class. And if you take uh, two teachers, you get down to fifteen point sixty-five perplexed. The state recommends a hundred students for a teacher. We have less than fifty for each teacher and a class size average of twenty-five. Therefore, I don't think this would have any real impact on our students. In addition to which, we listen to twenty additional fifteen to sixteen at the moment. Students are going out one to two periods a day. So this is even more students out of the classroom. We have, we don't have enough student population for all of our classes. And when you get down to those low numbers of three or four in a class, you don't have a class that you can even share a good dialogue and have a good conversation in the class. So we are, we are asking our taxpayers to pay way too much. And we're not being fiscally responsible with the staff levels we have.
Okay, Andy?
Um, I would just um, like to um, ask the board to not vote in favor of uh, Priscilla's motion. While I've been a staunch uh, advocate that we need to look at our, our staffing and our numbers in our classes, um, I have two reasons for that. One, the last thing I'd wanna do is um, is put a new principal coming in, in a situation where they're not, they may not be familiar with our, our, our building and our scheduling and whatnot and and not have control over uh, changing programming. I think having, not filling the math position, but leaving it there um, for a new principal to come in and, and maybe look at what our programming is. And if they wanna come back to the board and recommend a, a position differently, um, that's how I would look at that. Um, the other piece is that we are working with New Solutions K twelve, which is a, a group out of um, that's known for assisting um, second, you know, well, all schools, so all levels. Uh, but we're bringing them in to work with secondary, our secondary schools on working towards our multi-tiered systems to support and how we create intervention to support students. Uh, but also how we can better utilize our staff and scheduling. And it's a um, we're bringing them in this year, but it's an all-year project through next year to help us advise into next year. Um, and one of the things that they advised is, don't go in um, and make a whole bunch of cuts, uh, just because you know you have extra staff. Let's work through it and look at what the needs of our students are and how we can best utilize them. And um, if we were to go in with reductions, uh, we may actually um, be in a position that we can't make as much uh, movement or look at possibly, as I say, other programming that might benefit our students.
June, you had your hand up, you?
I did. Um, Andy, I, I have a few things. Um, do we know how many kids are coming in next year? The incoming freshman number about?
I saw eighty today.
I, I was gonna guess estimate around seventy to eighty.
Okay, so we're getting, we're getting a few more than we're losing.
Yep.
Okay, um, and also I was curious as to maybe the person that's re-resigning might fit into one of her categories? No? Okay, all right. Um, I guess.
Category is that?
That's all I have right now.
Talk about that when we get there, but it's not on us. David, you're next.
Uh, yes, I'm gonna support the motion. I'm going to explain why I'm supporting the motion. And I'm doing this with all due respect to the forward-thinking work that um, Andy is doing. Um, in terms of trying to, um, I guess you would say realigned the, the delivery of curriculum. We started the year with five math positions. We had the fifth math teacher leave very early on in the school year. We were easily able to absorb um, those students into the other four math classes. And I see absolutely no reason why we cannot continue to um, to do that. Um, I think that the uh, testimony that's given by my Rockingham colleague to my left, well, the second Rockingham colleague to my left um, is very convincing. Um, state of Vermont runs much smaller uh, class sizes on average than practically every other state in the union. And when we are this grossly, um, I believe misstaffed in terms of the student-teacher ratio, I think it's time to start cleaning it up. And I will make a direct comment about a uh, new administrator and leaving these positions potentially to be filled. And that assists. Those positions tend to be very difficult to fill after a school year begins. Let the new uh, let the new principal work within the budget that he's given with, and I say he, that's, that's really a non-gender specific term. Let the individual work with the um, teaching staff that they have to work with. And you know, this is a pretty good start and I think we need to, you know, seriously look at a number of factors which influence teaching modes that we've been carrying um, at least for the last twenty years. So absolutely, I support the motion.
Jason?
Uh, I too will support the motion. I've been asking now for a few years, um, what can we do to improve the overall ranking of our school? And it's um, not improved within staff that we have. It's actually going backwards. And through the interview process, if you explain to the new principal, what the standards are going to be and set the tone and expectation right up front, which would then make uh, at least the expectation on of what we want from not only a, a board, but uh, upper administration. Um, I have two questions, Molly, please. Um, what happens if we say no to the roster?
I don't know.
I'd have to research that. I mean, we have to, we have to provide contracts to teachers by April fifteenth.
Okay.
And I think I had emailed you all, um, the advice we had from our attorney from our last meeting.
Okay.
Which is, there, there is statute within Vermont that says you have to do that as well. So.
I just, um, I think you, you know, forward thinking, it's this, it always has seemed backward that we approve a budget and then do a roster. And uh, you know, we got lackluster performance reviews. So we're kinda, you know, voting on uh, you know, blindfolded dartboard, basically. Um, and then how many? Does, does anybody know what we have in AEP? Like, what's the teacher-student ratio in AEP? Cause both of those teachers are qualified to teach other things as well.
Uh, I don't have the specific number of students enrolled. It, it does vary based on each block. Um, so some blocks might be smaller than others, um, but um, they're lower. I mean, um, and there's, there's two staff in there.
Yeah, two, two full-time staff that, that's a lot. So just.
I mean, there's not twenty-four or, or thirty students in there. We're probably closer to if on the big end, uh, I think I saw one time that one period, there might have been eleven students.
Full eleven students, so it's five and a half per one teacher?
Correct.
So I mean, theoretically, you could take one of those and put them in a if they have a degree in whatever, they could take something else. I mean, are, are they guaranteed AEP? I don't, I'm just asking. I don't know how that works.
Um, I, I think their, their contract would stipulate AEP, but within the CBA, we have the ability that if we need to reassign, we can, we have to give them thirty days' notice.
Gotcha. So, so it, it would advocate then, uh, teachers being able to multitask. It's in their best interest to do more than one profession, is that accurate?
Yeah, and I, I believe that one of the AEP teachers is actually teaching a section of financial literacy as well. So, um, so they do, do work outside of the AEP at times, um, but um, I, I, I think where I was going with, with my statement is, ha, um, I'm not advocating that we fill a math position. I'm just advocating that we allow the new principal to come in. If the new principal is identifying that, you know, we could add programming of some kind in another area, that we have the flexibility to come back to the board and just talk about what those positions might be to get approval before we even move in that direction.
So, so if I vote yes for this roster, I'm voting yes with the uh, what Priscilla mentioned to cut to teachers. That's, that's all. Okay, thank you.
David?
Okay, something that I need to point out here, we passed a budget, a finite figure. You take two positions off this roster. That does not prevent um a future administrator from coming to us and saying. I really need to know the position in science. The money's there, okay? The money's there. But we are putting down a marker in terms of what our staffing load looks like in this building, and I think that's important.
That's correct. Yeah, I think that's the reason I was saying it. I, I just wanted it that we have that flexibility and that the board is. Understanding what you just said. You said much better than I did.
The budget gives you the flexibility. Reducing your roster does not in any way re- reduce. That flexibility.
No, so by doing this, we're not changing our budget numbers, but our budgets are already passed. Then the money will be in the budget. That doesn't mean money has to be spent, but. If we get a new administrator in here and says, you know, Heather is killing it, but she needs somebody else. To help her make this program flourish even more, the money's still gonna be there. You know, if we get a hundred kids come in next year instead of eighty and decide we need another whatever class. All we're doing is, all we're doing is taking two out of this roster. We're not, you know, nobody's gonna be held with anything different as far as a budget number.
So to me, it just, it sounds like what Priscilla's uh advocating for is kinda like the right size. To right-size it. And that's, I'm kinda thinking of it in my head.
It, it will require ripping one social studies teacher.
Yep.
And it'll be the teacher with the least amount, right? That's what it has to be.
But it, it is, it's possible that that teacher. Has certification or or, you know, like, let's say, um, they have dual certification in English. They could. Fill, fill that role that's open, or that person may, you know, could have dual certification in technology and. And design, right? And so I, I have, I would have to go back and look at it, so.
Part of the reason too for that area is that when we had four hundred students. You know, we had four in that department. Um, I didn't, okay. The, the science one because there's three and a half science, so that was the one that, that had, had the biggest. Amount of classes that were low. Um, the English classes were all ten or five. Um, a- and so I was trying to, you know, look at it that way.
Any other discussion? Brenda? You're muted, Brenda.
Before we vote, can I just be clear? So if, if that social studies teacher is not needed because of the class size. They can be reallocated somewhere else depending on how they're certified?
Correct, correct. So if they had, let's say they had an, um, I'm, I'm gonna make something up. They had an elementary certification. They could apply for, we, we have elementary positions open, or we have special education positions open, so they would be eligible to apply.
So.
For any position.
But what you were saying is, so their contract wouldn't change, but they had to have a two-week notice?
No, so, so I, like, like. So, there's two things. If, if here, if you approve a roster that is one less teacher in a certain area. Then that's a reduction in force, and so the CBA is very um spelled out in how we go about doing that um piece. Uh, so again, if that teacher has a dual certification in an English position. In English, and there's an open English position, then they have a right to that position without interview just to go in there.
Yeah.
What I'm saying, the, the, the question that Jason was asking was if a teacher, and he is the example of AEP. If that teacher is working in AEP, um and we do a contract and approve it through your approval of the teacher roster. We provide them a contract that says you're the AEP teacher.
Okay.
There's a change, and we need to adjust that for some reason. Then under the CBA, we have thirty, we have to notify them thirty days ahead of time of that change. And then they can, then they can be moved to another position. This is up, does that clarify?
We don't know, but we don't know when we vote whether that's possible on that person.
We, we won't know un- unless there's a, a need. So, so an example, we had a, we had an um, a situation in student services. A couple of years back where we needed to move a teacher who was at the middle school to the Westminster School. We had already provided them a contract that said, you're gonna be special education at the middle school. We needed that teacher to move to Westminster, so we provided that teacher thirty days' notification of moving them. Because their contract said one thing and we had to change it.
Yeah.
So, um, so I, I, I think in this situation. Uh, with AEP would be if all of a sudden, I, I'm thinking up off the top of my head, if all of a sudden we had. Only two kids who needed alternative education for the whole year, we might wanna reallocate that teacher to another assignment. Because we don't need them, so we would need to give them thirty days' notification. We would be communicating with the board at all times if we had to do something like that.
Okay.
June?
Could you do that at any time? So I'm, I'm just looking at the new principal. And he could. They, the person comes in and they see, they look at the whole. Um, class assignments, um, the, the master schedule and says. You know, there's only three kids in this class, but there are thirty-something in this one. Can they, at that point, go to you and say, Andy, can we move this teacher to that? At any point during?
So, so the quick answer is yes. Yes, you can do that.
So any point during the year?
Yes. Um, there's ideal times to do that in a high school schedule. Um, based just on the fact that you have semesters and stuff of that nature, but the, the collective bargaining agreement does allow for that, yes.
But that teacher could say, no, I don't, what, could that teacher say, no, I'm not moving? My contract says this.
So the collective bargaining agreement, um, I'm trying to think of the language that we actually just negotiated this past time into it. Uh, so I don't wanna quote it, uh, but basically, you're supposed to ask for volunteers first. And then if there are no volunteers, then you can assign, you, you can move a teacher that is um basically. It's the best fit or the, or has the least amount of seniority. I, I can't remember the exact language, but there's some language in there. So if there was some reason, you, a lot of it's written for elementary school. Cause you know, like all of a sudden, we get a whole bunch of um second graders move in and we only have one second grade class. We need to open another second grade class, and so you're gonna, you're gonna combine a third grade class and create two second grade classes. That's the kinda scenario I think it's envisioned for. So it would take, there'd be, it'd be a little bit more intricate at the high school. But it could be done.
So I'm just trying to understand that better, I guess. Um, we all know that there's a lot of movement in the first couple of weeks of school, kids dropping classes, kids picking up classes. But if we have two teachers that are teaching in a class that only has three kids. We still have to open it up to volunteers to move to another.
So I would have to, I have to double check on that because that's where the intricacy of the high school comes in.
Okay.
Um, but under collective bargaining, you can. Uh, uh, tell a teacher that you're moving their assignment based on what you provided for them, so um. So if, I, I'm trying to think of a scenario that, that kinda, if for some reason we saw that all of a sudden we need. Another science class, then you can go have a conversation with the teacher who, who might have that certification to teach that piece. You know, and hopefully that teacher would be willing to help you out, cause there's a, you know, there's a movement, like. They're gonna teach one less class over here and you're gonna teach another section over here. If you had to completely take that teacher out of that assignment and move them somewhere else. Um, it would all be based upon what's their certification to do, and then what's the need of that program. And after two weeks in the high school and you're saying, and say like, oh, there's only three kids in AEP. That, that program ebbs and flows with students' needs, so I, I can't speak to, would that be the appropriate time to do it? But there is the opportunity that if you notice something, you can move that teacher to another assignment. But it's clear as mud, and I, I, I'm sorry. And some of it, some of it has to do, some of it has to do with just what are the options and what are available and, and what you're trying to do. So I mean, we're, we're thinking of hypotheticals here. Um, but if all of a sudden we needed four more sections of English. And we've already filled all those English possession, sections, then do we, the, the question you're asking me, I, I believe is. Do we come back to the board and say we need to hire another English teacher, or do we reallocate a resource?
Yeah.
And the answer is yes, you can reallocate the resource.
Okay, but the, the resource could say no.
Not necessarily.
They, they, they have a, there is a process in place, and then you play out the process. There's a grievance process and, and whatnot, so you play that out, so.
I can give you an example. I can give an example.
Please wait.
Yeah, can you finish?
Does anyone else like to speak before Priscilla does? Because, Darcy, you have been very quiet.
Thinking.
Tanya?
I know.
Mike? Okay.
Okay, I can give an example. I, for example, I, I've taught special ed, okay? Um, we had a English class when I was here that needed support. So they asked me to go in and help with the English class, which was not my assignment. For that year, okay? I needed a couple of weeks to be able to adjust my students. Um, I ended up agreeing to go in after one week. Which the contract said two, but I went in and I contributed. So I was asked to do that. You really can't say no if there's a need.
There is a motion on the floor to adjust, to approve the teacher roster. With taking off a social studies teacher and. An open position for a math teacher. So I just wanna remind everyone that with all the things that you think you're responsible for. As a board member and all the power that you think we have, real truth is. This is probably one of the most important things that you vote on other than the budget. All the things that we try to control, but we really can't. This is something that is, this is the future of our school. And we do do things a little differently, but it's our own fault we do it differently. Because when we were approving the budget, those facts were the same back in October as they are now. And. So even though, Mike, point well taken, why we're approving a teacher roster when we already did the budget. But the truth is, we had this information when we did the budget and we approved it. We, we talked about all these scenarios as a board and still approved the budget. And so with that saying, I, I learnt a saying from David Cracker a long time ago. I'm gonna, you know, go with what administration suggests because we need to trust them. But I also know now, listening to Andy, that even if we do make this cut, cause it's a cut. And any other way, Priscilla has made a cut in the teacher roster. The money is still there. The money's been approved. If new administration comes in and wants to fill. All three open positions and a social studies position, the money's in the budget to do that, so. I, I just wanna make that clear to everybody that, yes, tonight, maybe you're gonna send somebody home. But that doesn't mean that that's gonna happen. And just so everybody knows that, so next November, we're not sitting here arguing each other because. We have these positions and we have classes going on, because that could still happen, right, Andy?
Correct.
I, I knew I was right, I just wanted you to tell me it was. So we, so the most important thing, I guess, that I wanna just make sure everybody knows, and then I'll be quiet, is. We have the opportunity to look at this next November, and so instead of. Trying to reinvent the wheel now, if we've already approved it. We need to look at this stuff better when we look at the budget, because we had this stuff and we approved it. So I've said my two cents, and I'm ready for a vote if everybody else is. Any other questions before we move on? Brenda, do you understand the motion? Or do you want me to say it one more time?
Say it one more time, please.
Okay, my understanding is that we have a motion on the table to accept the teacher's roster with two things changed on it. Priscilla would like to take off a social studies teacher and to take off the open math teacher. And hold on, let me get to my list. How do you vote? Yea or nay?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Tanya?
Um, oh, yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Priscilla?
Yes.
Darcy?
Yes.
June?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you very much.
Tennis courts. Here's the next one.
Tennis court. So on Friday, I met with Steve Horton. Um, and, and Sean Burke was with us and John, and we, we went out and looked at the um, the tennis courts. And um. Just discussed, you know, what's the best option, and um so Steve. He's, he's real good about, like, he can look at it and he can tell you, ballpark it, and it's, it's. And it's not like, you know, you're in a, you're in, you know, the polo grounds, you know, type of thing, like you're in a true ballpark. He really knows what he's talking about, which is, which is great. So he, he thinks it'll, it'll come in under forty thousand dollars to redo the entire thing. So pull it up, pull up the asphalt, you know, make sure the drainage is correct underneath, put down new asphalt, paint it and everything. Um, that would leave up the fencing uh that's currently there. Um, he thinks the fencing, based on pricing and everything, is, is, would be almost seventy thousand dollars just to do the fencing. So uh might be something, again, that's that kinda future planning that we might say to go do type of thing. Um, you could patch it, um, come in, put a new, like the same kinda what they've done in the past. Um, for about nine to, to ten thousand dollars, you can, you can repair it, and you'll get about five years out of it. If you replace the whole thing, you'll get twenty-five years out of it. So um, you know, um. I, I, I think you, we have the money and capital reserves, and I, I think it would probably make sense to do it. He doesn't feel like it would be a huge project, that something can be done over, you know, the summer type of thing and be up and ready to kinda go. But um, you know, it, the cracks since we walked it last, I, I, last year, I think building and ground walked it. Uh, um, the cracks have gotten substantially larger. Um, we were worried that there might be, you know. What would be underneath that asphalt? How thick was it? Um, and so at one point, Steve was thinking that maybe we need to come in and do a bore, uh, see if there's like six inches of, of asphalt or whatnot. Um, one of those cracks was um. Good enough to be open enough that you could stick your hand into it, and we could see that it's just the regular um depth of what it, you know. I think two, three inches of what it should be, so um, you know, we don't need to spend anything on doing that. So he was gonna get um some numbers for us, some harder numbers um on the side, you know, just what needs to be done for the tennis. You know, tennis court and, and whatnot, so.
So maybe by next meeting, we would have um.
So maybe by next meeting, we would have, um, an answer to roll on.
Yep. And I think, I think we might be able to give even more information at building and ground.
Okay, perfect.
Any questions? Great. New business, board retreat. Mike?
Thank you. Uh, you know, there's really only one worse thing than being the A speaker and the A agenda. And that's to be the last speaker in front of the happy hour. And I don't think we got that wrong. So I think, I think we're okay here. But anyways, I'm gonna boil this, got a five page, uh, five or eight page deck here. I'm gonna boil it down real, real simple. Um, you know, as a new member, I'm looking for ways to help support Andy by doing so the student. And the bottom line is, um. I kinda see two big picture issues. One is the curriculum and I think that's a good place to start because I think a lot of things can fall out from that. This discussion we had about the roster here kinda keyed into that and also plays into the budgeting process. But for me, the bottom line is, and I don't know the numbers exactly. Roughly call it seventy percent of our pop student population is not going to go to college. And what I think we should be addressing. Test courts important, a lot of these day-to-day things, it's a thirty million dollar budget. I mean, operating budget, there's a lot going on here. But I think that there's some higher level issues that we as a board should be addressing. And to me, the curriculum and the fact that roughly call it sixty to seventy percent of our students. You know, with the twenty-eight credit requirement in a state that only requires twenty-one. Is the correct, is the curriculum? Need to be adapted to those students that are not going on to college? And do we have to build some flexibility into that curriculum? Because the job that Heather's doing is fantastic, but I also know there's a lot of students that can't get to the tech center. Earlier in their education because they have to get the credits to, uh, to graduate. And I, I think that we as a board, and I think, uh, you know, a retreat would be a good way to address this. And, um, you know, I think there's the potential to. Deal with the second big issue which I see, which is this long list of. Capital issues that plant issues that we have here at the high school. And how are we gonna deal those? How are we gonna potentially fund those? And I think just from the standpoint of. I think success comes from two things, having good sick, you know, situational awareness of where we are in the economy, what's going on. And then also some long-term planning. So those are in my mind, the kind of the two challenges that we have to tackle. I won't go through this whole deck, but the bottom line is you can, you can go through it. I'm happy to answer any questions. We're gonna go into a recession. The, the, the S of money, you know, today is the, you know, days of wine and roses relative to where I see things going. And that's a function of how much leverage we have, uh, as a result of government spending. Uh, in terms of what the Federal Reserve has to do to normalize interest rates. We got some tough sledding ahead. Up until this point, we've had no problem passing budgets. You know, inflation's tough, the price of everything's up. But the real issue is when people start losing their jobs, you're gonna start to potentially get more pushback on the budgets. So I'd be inclined to wanna address some of these issues before they get presented to us. So in my mind, that's the thought in terms of, uh, I mean, uh, retreat. Again, keep it really narrowly focused initially on curriculum. Um, Molly throughout the date of the twenty-second, which is the second. Uh, Monday of the month of May, which we don't have big plan for. That's kind of our backup meeting. Maybe do something on off-site at working dinner or something, um, you know, um. And if everybody's in agreement with that, I'd be happy to, uh, you know, collect the data input for that meeting. And in my mind, that meeting would be a kind of a meeting to set up what would be a task force, small. Uh, force of, of folks that can go out, collect data from all the, uh, you know, participants that are gonna be impacted by this. Um, and, and, you know, look to maybe come back to the board with a report sometime late in the summer. Anybody have any questions or any thoughts or? Anything on the deck that you, you wanna dig into? Like I said, I, you know, I don't wanna, uh, drag the media out while it needs to be. Yeah, David.
Hey, thank you, Mike and Molly. We're so often, I'm, I'm your rep on River Valley Tech Center Board up until it reorganizes in June and then. God bless you, Mike. You're. Pat, you're it. Um, but I ask the tech center board from time to time. What are we teaching? In the twenty-first century, we weren't teaching in the twentieth century. And that remains kind of an open question. Okay? Um, I think you can apply the same sort of question here at the high school. Um, how is our curriculum, which I think was largely developed in the twentieth century? Um, meeting the needs of. Kids in the twenty-first century. And I think that, you know, board has, you know, if you will, two responsibilities. Policy and finance. And I think that, um, when we start talking about how we're delivering. Education in the twenty-first century, that has absolutely everything. To do with the board's primary responsibility of. Policy and policy oversight. Um, I think we took a small step in that direction tonight, possibly by, uh, trying to right-size our staffing. Uh, given, um, our student teacher ratio. But I think we need to really start thinking about how we best meet the needs. Not so much necessarily of the high flyers, the thirty percent that go on to college, but everybody else. That comes to school here. And it's, does not lend itself to a one or two meeting solution in my judgment. But certainly being able to sit down and talk about it, not worry about the tennis courts while we're doing it. I think would be a big step in the right direction and it has been years, years. Little more, five years, eight years.
It's been a long time.
Retreat.
It's time. So I'm not gonna lie, um, board retreats for me, last year I went to. I thought were the worst spent time of, in a long time. Um, they were very negative. They turned into. Excuse my language, but no better word than a bitch session. And it's not what I wanna be a part of. So I've stayed right clear away from them because I just, i- if, because the cameras aren't on. You go into a room and people think that they can just. And I don't have a lot of tolerance for that. So I welcomed Mike with open arms when he said. What do you think? Because I knew and I feel that. This is really important and I don't wanna talk about this tonight. I want us to take this home and digest it and leave it on your. Wherever in your house where you sit to watch TV and shut the TV off and look at it, but. On that night, I would like us to have a pretty good conversation about. Just what we're talking about here tonight. And have it be, uh, a very productive evening. But also be able to sit down and, and, you know. Have a meal and be able to talk about stuff on a round table instead of separate away from each other and. And, you know, be able to talk to each other. And so I thank you, Mike, for kinda kicking me in the butt to get this going because. It is important. Somebody got it. Most people aren't there.
Won't go with the bus driver from Ohio.
So it is, um, I think it's a good idea. Um, Nicole's working on some information on where we're gonna meet. And we'll get that out. It's, it's a ways away, but, um, I do think that. You know, let's think about just what we get on here. What are our goals and what are we looking for for, for curriculum? Cause curriculum is a big, huge part of what we're doing here and. And to think about, you know, David got, he's got those numbers in my head. At twenty-one versus twenty-eight and. You know, and, and I know of a little kid that's very close to me that, you know, she didn't have any trouble getting those credits, but. She wanted to take more of the tax and felt she had to get back here because she had to take these other. What she considered to be useless classes for the career that she was choosing. And so it, you know, she can't be the only kid that that's happened to. So I think that's really important for us to really think about. Yes, June?
Um, would Andy be able to get us the current curriculum for all of the? High school board for this meeting?
I am sure he can.
He's not looking so sure.
Yeah, we, we can get it together. And I think, I think also it, um, not to belabor this, I mean. For, for me, knowing the board, the goals the board wants, and, and I think for all of you to have, like, these are the goals that you're, you're. You're, you're striving for, you want for the building, then as we make decisions, we make decisions based on those goals and we don't feel like we're. You know, chasing or, or are we doing the right thing? And that's not a negative statement in a sense, but. We wanna be purposeful. We wanna be moving in a direction and. Um, what I have learned this last almost two years now, um, is. A lot of stuff is on memory. And, and, and I'm probably gonna cross the whole SU and it's like, and. It's not the, you know, so if we've got it down, we know the direction so we can keep going back to it and, and, um, it's very helpful. So.
I think timing with, um, you bring in those new solutions for. It couldn't be better. I mean, this is the time for us to get clear about what we want and then present that to them. And, you know, working with them, that helps us with the budgeting process. It, it, you know, a lot of things fall out of getting this right. Um, so if that's the case, I would welcome input from everybody that I could put together to present to us that night. Uh, obviously we'll have a lot more conversations, but any part, any kind of input that people wanna send to me in advance. I'm happy to bring that together and.
Would, would, would it be? And I'm asking real quick, Mike, I, I mean, um, we do have Thought Exchange, which is an online platform that we can. Put out to board members that could generate ideas and then people can. Add to them and like them or not like them and, and, but also can add like, you know. June can say that she wants to add, you know, um. Athletics is a, is a, uh, is a way to earn PE credit. And everyone else can say, yeah, it's a great idea or they can add on new, new things and it's anonymous.
Yeah.
It's not necess- so it would just give a lot of.
Kind of like a chat room or?
It's, it's basically an online focus group.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, I, I don't know, other than a whole bunch of emails coming at you. I mean, it might. Help facilitate some of the conversation because David.
Yeah.
Always has something to offer and positively, but. It, it would give voice to Tanya, maybe who you, unless you see it or hear it, you don't know to respond.
I'm absolutely happy to do it any way that you think is the most productive. I just. To Molly's point, I don't wanna be involved with a bitch session. I wanna be involved with, uh, you know, productive. And the more we can do in advance of that, uh, the more productive the conversation will be and the quicker we get. And, and also I think focus is key. So, um, I'm, I'm a little concerned about opening it up too many things. I would keep the first endeavor on curriculum.
Right.
And then there'll be some things that fall off of that. We can pursue those after those things fall off.
So, so why, why don't we connect and we can, and just so everyone knows, so if you get an email from Thought Exchange, that's what it's for and then, uh, we'll keep prompt, yeah, so.
It's a good op, it's also a good time to have this board retreat. I think. It may help in the search for the new principal.
Yep.
And, and give that person a better idea of what we're all looking for.
Okay, let's move on to eight B resignation.
So sadly, um. A, a week ago, um, or maybe a little bit more, um, I received a letter from, um. Our athletic director, um, informing us that, um, he is, um. Resigning from his position, um, and moving on to some other, um, opportunities. So, um. It's not. Not a, it's not a certified position, but it's something to bring to the board to let the, the board be aware of. So, um. We have already, um. We started posting today for that position. So, but.
Yes, June. Um, so with the new posting. I've, I've been hard and fast. Since I've had my older one graduate, that the AD here. Should also be the AD for the middle school. Because the middle school uses all of our, all of the facilities here. And in the past, um, Peewee, I mean, Peewee uses it too. So in the past. We have Peewee co- Peewee coming in, there are middle school games, there's high school games all going on. And people have needed to find a new spot to practice or to have their games and. And I just think because. The two intertwine so much.
Yeah. Absolutely. We, uh, have rewritten the job descriptions to be a middle school, high school, athletic director.
Thank you.
Because, because we do believe that that consistency is.
David?
Uh, Andy, what's the effective date on the resignation?
Um. He gave it to me on March thirtieth and we just haven't had a chance to meet. Oh, I'm sorry, at the end of the year, pardon me. Okay, sorry.
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth and.
I wanna speak for him, but I haven't seen.
Sorry, David. Um, so.
I want him.
Yeah.
So the thing that I understand is, is that we're gonna take some of that other. Baloney off him, like part of the attendance and if we're gonna make him. If we're gonna make that person. An athletic director, they're not gonna be sitting in the attendance booth when I come in here to do something.
Well, I can't say they're not gonna be sitting in there because there might be a time we need them to sit. But, uh, well, it could be her too. Is that him? Thank you. Could be them, yes. Um, or they, um. But, um. No, we, 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 we feel that by coupling it with the middle school, it, it. You know, would, and, um. And, and also moving it just to, um, actually having the direct report to the superintendent of schools as opposed to the building principals. So that we're aware of it because Title IX is so much more involved today with athletic directors.
And if they're gonna be working for both schools. You know, that's really where he's gonna end up anyway. And that person. So.
Uh, doesn't Rocky Ham already have one?
For this, for this current, for this current year, yes, it's, but it's not, it's, it's a, it's a year to year.
It's a, who can we get to do it this time? It's an awful job for the middle school.
The, the other piece. The other piece, just to add in a little bit with David, I did meet with the in, and, um. But this whole rest of the year is planned out and scheduled. The fall is fair, is, is scheduled out. And they're already working on, um, the winter. So. I, I feel we're in a good space. Reconditioning's happening. So he's, he's full press, uh, which is, which is good. So.
Jason, I'd just like to, uh. Say that it's really important, um, from a, a coach's standpoint. That the athletic director is also involved with the middle school. It's kinda like a farm system, so to speak, to develop. Boys and girls, um, to love for the game and as they move forward and it, and, and the. Uh, communication bridge between the middle school and high school. So, uh, again, I think it's a, a right step and, uh. As far as, uh, right sizing. Everything. So.
Nothing we need to do, right?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, we're gonna move on to director's comments and then we're gonna go to executive session. Brenda? Yeah. Mike, your job is keep her awake too. So I'm sorry, but we're gonna help you. Tennis courts are. Steve Horton and John and Sean and Andy went up and looked at them and to repair it, it's nine thousand and the fix is forty thousand. And Steve's working on getting that done this summer. Brenda, director's comments.
Yes, um, I just wanted to say that I so much appreciated the presentation by, I think her name is Heather. And, um, and also we welcomed Mike last, last time to the board, but I really. And, um, and also, we welcomed Mike last, last time to the board, but I really. Appreciate what he's bringing to the board for this board retreat, and I'm glad it's only for one night, because it's easier to manage. But I'm, I think it'll be very positive, and I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. David?
Well, uh, two things, one is I hope that by the time Buildings and Grounds meets again, we can get a, either a. Status on our PCB understand, our PCBs, because understand that testing's been done. And if we can't get a status, can you find out why we can't get a status? I just. This, uh, suspicion about politics at PCBs, and the other is, um, I'm hopeful that. Um, at a meeting in the near future, that we can get, uh, an update on Haver. And the two things I'm interested in is, of course, wh- what do we have in in Haver for money? And, um, what are the allowable uses, uh, for the Haver gift? Because, um, we're, right, close to three years now, this money's been hanging around without a real. Clear, uh, understanding of, uh, wh- what we can, what Haver believes we should be doing with it.
Mike? Good. Priscilla?
I wanna take just a minute to say that. I really appreciate, uh, the people and the support that my family has had. Just thank you. I'm good.
June?
I'm awesome.
Jason? So last week, um. Uh, my daughter was at the National Honor Society and, and, uh, she was inducted into the. Uh, National Honor Society, I'm very proud of her. And I'm proud of all the kids that were there, um, and I I found it very interesting that. I think it was two seniors that were there, and all of the. How's it work? So whoever was in inducted last year spoke about somebody inducted this year. But the two seniors were there that were inducted this year, and. Uh, there was nobody there to say anything about them, really. Um, it was a little. Hey, congratulations, those two people there. So I had the pleasure of, uh, knowing one of those people since he was, uh. I don't know, fifth grade or sixth grade, I coached them in Pee-wee football, and he was, uh. Uh, not a very. Tall kid, strong kid, um, but he was a, a young man who worked hard. And learned what I I felt that year, not only to work hard then. Um, but I I think it helped carry him into the young man he is today. And, uh. I'm proud of him. Um, he worked, he was, he was, it was funny, because he was the type of kid that. Was undersized to be a lineman. Right, so he might have weighed fifty pounds dripping wet, and yet he wanted to play nose tackle. All the time, in practice, nose tackle, or line, he wanted to say, hey, I'm just as tough as anyone else. He might have gotten, you know, pushed back quite a bit, but he always got right back up, right back into position, so. He's gonna do very well in life, so. He's a, he's a good guy.
Feel comfortable mentioning his name, or?
His name was Tyler Sprague.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to go on executive session for student matter, please?
Um, I'll make that motion, Molly, um, I'll make a motion to enter into executive session. At eight forty-four to discuss a personnel. Uh, it's a student matter, excuse me, where premature public knowledge could place the board, and where the individuals had a disadvantage and like.
And is it correct that? Will we have any action?
There will be no action taken, and just so we can get through all this and then we have to get back on. The date of the next meeting is April twenty-fourth. And we're gonna go into executive session in the fishbowl.
This meeting was recorded by Falls Area Community Television, located at One Hospital Court, Bellows Falls, Vermont. If you would like a copy of the meeting, our phone number is eight zero two four six three one six one three. Or email us at fact eight ten at gmail dot com. Falls Area Community TV, keeping government honest.